Good evening. The thirty-sixth meeting of the seventy-third term of your Baltimore City Council is now called to order. As a reminder to members of the press, general public, and visitors today, as the executive order has been in place for some time, we ask that everyone wear your mask in the council chambers. We also ask so you can be as productive as this council tonight, that we silence your cell phones, or laptops, or electronic devices, to ensure that there aren't any interruptions. In lieu of invocation this evening, um, in lieu of an invocation this evening, I ask that we join in a brief moment of silence for reflection. Now, at this time, we will turn to a flag to state the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with dignity and justice.
You're fine. You're good. At this time, Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos. Mr. President, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, we'll proceed to adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the Journal of the June twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two proceedings are on the council members' desks.
Without objection, the journal will be adopted. Hearing and seeing none, the journal is now adopted. At this time, bill signed by the mayor can be found on page two of our agenda for tonight. I will now turn to bills being introduced. Madam Clerk, if you could please read the first bill.
City Council Bill Twenty-two dash zero-two-five-two, Commercial Vehicle Monitoring System. For the purpose of modifying the maximum number of operational cameras authorized to enforce Baltimore City's commercial vehicle monitoring system. Sponsor: McCray, Conway, Bullock.
At this time, I would like to call the sponsor of the bill, Chair of Health, Environment, and Technology, Councilwoman McCray, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a pretty straightforward bill. The current law mandates that only six cameras may be operational at the time to enforce the city's commercial vehicle monitoring system. Increasing the operational camera threshold from six to sixteen will allow DOT the flexibility to expand the depth of truck cameras across the city, and ensure that commercial vehicles stay on their designated routes, and reduce the influx within our residential areas. Um, I do want to thank DOT for working with me on this bill draft, um, and thank you, colleagues.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Are there additional? I see the hand raised of Councilwoman Ramos, Chairman Stokes, Councilwoman Burnett, Vice President Middleton, Councilman Torrance, Councilman Cohen. Thank you. Uh, that bill's been assigned to rules and oversight. Madam Clerk, two-five-three.
City Council Bill Twenty-two dash zero-two-five-three, City Property Renaming Barclay Elementary Middle School to Gertrude S. Williams Barclay School. For the purpose of changing the name of Barclay Elementary Middle School, School Fifty-four, located at twenty-nine-hundred Barclay Street, Baltimore, Maryland, two-one-two-one-eight, to Gertrude S. Williams Barclay School. Sponsor: Stokes, Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Chair, would you like to speak on behalf of this bill? If so, I yield the floor to Chairman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Gertrude was a long-term, um, long-term teacher there at Barclay Elementary, and taught our young people, you know, the expertise she learned to make sure they be successful when they leave elementary school and go to bigger, better things. And what a better way of naming that school after somebody who came from the community, who made our kids, our young people, successful, instead of always naming national people. We need to name the people that really do the work here in Baltimore City. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That bill's been assigned to Economic Community Development Committee. Uh, now, we're going to turn to resolutions to be introduced for first reading. Madam Clerk, if you could please read the first resolution.
City Council Resolution Twenty-two dash zero-one-seventeen-R, Informational Hearing, Baltimore Public Sanitation, Homeless Encampments. For the purpose of inviting representatives from the Department of Public Works, the Department of Housing and Community Development, the Baltimore City Health Department, the Baltimore City Police Department, and the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services, to brief the city council on potential strategies for mitigating waste left by homeless encampments, including a discussion regarding the procurement of a contracted service to clear hazardous waste from such encampments. Sponsor: Porter, Bullock, Middleton.
At this time, I would like to recognize the sponsor of the bill, Councilwoman, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. So, according to Baltimore's two-thousand-point-in-time count, there are currently two thousand one, one-hundred-and-ninety-three individuals experiencing homelessness. And so, while fourteen percent of this population is unsheltered and living in temp encampments throughout the city, parks, and neighborhood, this bill would provide an opportunity to not only increase sanitation in these areas, but also provide persons experiencing homelessness, or those that want to live out of doors with the dignity of public health sanitation, and also a rightful place to live. This is an opportunity for Baltimore to not only begin to ask, ask questions about the encampments, but also ensuring that not only that they are sanitized, they're healthy, but also that they are safe as well. And so, I thank my colleagues for working with me, co-sponsoring this bill, and I look forward to further discussion. Thank you.
Are there additional co-sponsors? I see the hand raised of Councilman Torrance, Councilman Cohen, Chairman Stokes, Councilwoman Ramos. Thank you for that. This resolution has been assigned to Health, Environment, and Technology Committee. Madam Clerk, one-one-eight-R.
City Council Resolution Twenty-two dash zero-one-seventeen-R, Investigational Hearing, Prostitution, Diversion, and Treatment. For the purpose of inviting representatives from the Baltimore City Health Department, the Baltimore City Police Department, and the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success, to discuss current and proposed strategies to deter and treat prostitution in Baltimore City, including a review of diversion programs and services in use in other jurisdictions that may assist Baltimore City communities struggling with prostitution. Sponsor: Porter, Middleton.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I would like to recognize the sponsor of the bill.
Thank you. Oh, thank you so much, Mr. President. Um, so, a recent finding shows that Baltimore City has begun to change the discourse around prostitution and sex work. And so, while arrest and nine-one-one calls have decreased substantially in Baltimore City, um, this is an opportunity to figure out and understand, from the agency perspective, ways to grapple with this issue, um, to not only reduce the strain on local law enforcement, but also to provide, um, real diversion and treatment to the men and women that are, that are in this, that are, that are in this social ill. And so, this would provide an opportunity for an already disadvantaged community to not only secure traditional healthcare insurance, and also healthcare and clinical needs, but furthermore, would provide a enforcement lever, um, to individuals that are participating and preying on these individuals. So, I thank my colleagues again for the co-sponsorship, and I look forward to the discussion.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Are there any additional co-sponsors? I see the hand raised of Chairman Stokes. Uh, this resolution's been assigned to Public Safety and Government Operations Committee. On to one-one-nine-R, Madam Clerk.
City Council Resolution Twenty-two dash zero-one-seventeen-R, Park and Recreation Professionals Day. For the purpose of proclaiming July as Park and Recreation Month, and July fifteenth as Park and Recreation Professionals Day, and encouraging all citizens to recognize the importance of park and recreation services, and celebrate the dedicated service of Baltimore's Park and Recreation Professionals. Sponsor: Burnett, Bullock, Middleton.
Council would like to recognize the sponsor of the bill.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. Uh, so, many of the jurisdictions have been honoring wrecking park staff all over the country, uh, for their tremendous amount of hard work that they put into operating wreck centers year-round, uh, operating pools in the summer, uh, providing programming, uh, ample programming all over the city of Baltimore, maintaining our park spaces. Uh, it's a thankless job, especially in the summertime, where, you know, the last few years, we've had a tremendous amount of pressure put on the agency, uh, to still provide those resources for our young people, keeping them busy during an unprecedented pandemic. And so, I felt it was important to acknowledge their hard work and sacrifice, uh, by declaring this month, um, uh, sorry, uh, Park and Recreation Professionals Day, uh, to, to acknowledge that work, and lift up the, the things that they do to make sure that our young people have stuff to do, enriching activities, um, all across the city of Baltimore. Uh, and with that, I'd like to suspend the rules for immediate adoption, Mr. President.
Thank you. Without objections, the rules will be suspended. Hearing and seeing none, the rules are suspended.
I'd like to move the resolution for immediate adoption.
Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
The motion is approved. The resolution has been adopted. On to one-two-zero-R, Madam Clerk.
City Council Resolution Twenty-two dash zero-one-twenty-R, Resolution of Council Support, Neighborhood Revitalization Project, Seventeen Forty-three Park Avenue. For the purpose of formally recognizing the city council's support for the ongoing neighborhood revitalization project at Seventeen Forty-three Park Avenue, Block Three-Fifty-five, Lot Thirty-four, undertaken by the Bolton Hill Community Association and Midtown Community Benefits District. Sponsor: Costello, Torrance, Middleton.
Council would like to recognize the sponsor of the bill. Chairman Costello, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this resolution is a bit routine in nature, although something that we don't frequently see. Uh, a, uh, resolution of local support is required for a grant that the community is applying for at the state level. Uh, this location, while it's on my side of North Avenue, I worked very closely with Councilman Torrance on, as he's on the northern side, uh, across the street. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Uh, we're going to do immediate adoption?
Yes.
Call for it.
Mr. President, I move for immediate adoption.
Without objection, the rules will be suspended for immediate adoption. Hearing and seeing none, the rules are suspended. Um, at this time, Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll. Hold on, he has to move. You have to move for the resolution.
Let me take a step back. Mr. President, I move to suspend the rules for immediate adoption, because I forgot to make that motion. Okay, we're good there?
Yeah, we're good there.
Mr. President, I, I move immediate adoption.
You move the resolution be adopted.
Yes.
Uh, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
Uh, just real quick for the record, uh, we, it was moved and properly second. Uh, Councilman Torrance, uh, did the second on that. Uh, we just read through. We have a roll call, uh, and that is adopted. So, the motion's approved. The resolution is now adopted. You can find the consent calendar on Section A at the back of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, uh, the calendar is approved. We will now move the bills on second reader. Before we do, I would like to recognize Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move, we read short titles for second and third reader for the duration of the meeting.
Thank you, Chairman Costello. Without objection, we will be in short titles for the remainder of the meeting. Hearing and seeing none, we are in short titles. First, we're going to go to Education, Workforce, and Youth. Madam Clerk, if you could please read it in.
City Council Bill Twenty-two dash zero-two-one-one, City Employees and Retirees Healthcare Reform.
At this time, I'd like to recognize, uh, the Chair of the committee, Chairman Stokes, the floor is yours.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. The Education, Workforce, and Youth Committee held a bill on Thursday, June the thirtieth, ten a.m. In essence, this legislation I introduced in March of twenty-twenty-two provides inclusive measures to ensure that city retirees and those eligible for retirement are fully represented in benefit program decisions and proceedings. More specifically, this legislation would require the city to, one, create a city health and prescription drug benefits program that covers active employees, retirees, spouses, and dependents of employees, and give retirees a seat at the table with the city health, cities' health insurance committee. Requires information sharing of the program data to evaluate program costs and proposed premium rates. Increases number of meetings of the HIC to include retirees as participants. And finally, it creates standard accounting principles for this program. I report favorable without amendments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, is that a motion? Did you move the bill?
Yes, um, yes. I move the bill favorable.
Is there a second? It's been moved and properly seconded. Um, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, please say nay. Uh, the ayes have it. For the record, uh, please reflect it that, um, Council Vice President Sharon Green Middleton recuses herself from this vote. Uh, so, that should be a vote of fourteen, zero, and one. Um, this bill moves on to third reading. Uh, and next, we're going to go to rules and oversight. Madam Clerk, if you could please read in Twenty-two dash two-four-eight.
City Council Bill Twenty-two dash zero-two-forty-eight, Charter Amendment, Baltimore City Police Department, Local Control Establishment.
At this time, I would like to recognize Chair of the committee, Chairman Schleifer, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee held, uh, hearing on Twenty-two dash zero-two-forty-eight for the local control establishment of Baltimore City Police Department on July seventh, uh, and I'd like to move this bill favorable.
Is there a second? It's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, uh, the bill will be printed for third reading. Um, you're going to suspend the rules for this? Right.
Am I recognized?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, I'd like to, uh, suspend rules, uh, twelve-one, uh, for same-day advancement, from second to third reader.
Is there a second? It's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, uh, this rule, uh, twelve dash one will be suspended. At this time, I'm going to call on the clerk, uh, for a roll call.
President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
The ayes have it, the bill moves on for third reading today. And thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, next up, Madam Clerk, Twenty-two dash two-one-two.
City Council Bill Twenty-two dash zero-two-one-two, Residential Retention Tax Credit Amendment.
At this time, I'd like to call the Chair of the committee, Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, the committee held a hearing on this bill. Director Stegman and myself are working very closely with the Law Department, Mayor's Office of Government Relations, as well as, uh, the Department of Finance on Amendments, uh, per their letter. Uh, so, we're still working through that process. So, at this time, I move to waive City Council Rule Ten dash ten, which requires a committee chair to report on a bill heard in committee at the next council meeting to push this matter until July twenty-fifth, to give us time to work through those amendments.
Without objection, we will suspend, uh, for the rule, Ten dash ten. Hearing and seeing none, um, the rule will be suspended, and we will consider the bill on second reading on July the twenty-fifth. Mr. Chair, please continue to stand. Madam Clerk, if you could please read in two-three-zero.
City Council Bill Twenty-two dash zero-two-three-zero, Bond Issue Public Infrastructure Loan, Seventy-two million dollars.
This body would like to recognize Chair of the committee, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorably.
Is it? It's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, uh, this bill will be printed for third reading. Two-three-one, Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill Twenty-two dash zero-two-three-one, Bond Issue Community and Economic Development Loan, Thirty-six million dollars.
The body yields the floor to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorably.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor, please say aye. And all opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, this bill will be printed for third reading. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill Twenty-two dash zero-two-three-two, Bond Issue School Loan, Thirty-eight million dollars.
The body yields the floor to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorably.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor, please say aye. And all opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, uh, this bill will be printed for third reading. And Madam Clerk, last bill.
City Council Bill Twenty-two dash zero-two-thirty-three, Bond Issue Affordable Housing Loan, Fourteen million dollars.
Yield the floor to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorably.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the bill will be printed for third reading. We'll turn to bills on third reading, uh, for final passage that require invocation of City Council Rule Twelve dash one for same-day advancement. Madam Clerk, if you could please read the roll. With the bill first.
Twenty-two dash zero-two-forty-eight, Charter Amendment, Baltimore City Police Department, Local Control Establishment. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
That bill is approved. We'll now turn to committee announcements. Uh, chairs, if you hear the name of a committee, uh, please stand and proceed with any announcements that you might have. First committee we're going to go to is ECD by Madam Vice President. Thank you, Madam Vice President. Next up, Education, Workforce, and Youth, Chairman Stokes. Thank you, Chairman Stokes. Next up, Health, Environment, and Technology, Chairman McCray. Thank you, Chairman McCray. Next up, we're going to go to, uh, Public Safety and Government Operations.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We got two announcements. Uh, the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee will meet to hear Bill Twenty-two dash zero-zero-eight-eight-R, informational hearing on CSX coal silo explosion, on Wednesday, August twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two, at five p.m. in council chambers. And the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee will be meeting to hear LO twenty-one dash zero-zero-zero-six, Quarterly Crime Stats and Violence Prevention Plan, on Wednesday, July twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two. Um, and to clarify, this bill, um, or this LO will be used to discuss, um, the very recent shooting, um, uh, the, the violent, uh, interaction between a squeegee kid and a, um, driver. Um, you know, we've been dealing with this issue for a long time, and I think it's really important that we take the opportunity, um, during this meeting to talk about, um, all the resources that the city's putting forward to address the issue, and what further steps we can take. So, uh, with that, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next up, we're going to go to Rules and Legislative Oversight. Chairman Schleifer, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee will hold a hearing on Bill Twenty-two dash zero-two-three-eight on Thursday, July twenty-first, at one p.m., uh, for Charter Amendment Inspector General Advisory Board. And I'd like to, um, move to suspend rules, uh, twelve-two, to announce this next hearing.
Without objection, rules twelve dash two will be suspended. Hearing and seeing none is suspended. Chairman, the floor.
The Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee will hold a hearing on Bill Twenty-two dash zero-two-four-seven on Thursday, July twenty-first, at one fifteen p.m. On bill number Twenty-two, uh, dash zero-two-four-seven, Ordinance, um, About Obstructing Streets and Motor Vehicles and, uh, Street Racing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And last but not least, Ways and Means, Chairman Costello? Thank you, Chairman Costello. At this point, we're going to turn to regular announcements. Are there any regular announcements? I'd like to recognize, uh, Chair of Ways and Means, Chairman Costello, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, on Thursday of last week, another tragic and yet preventable death, uh, occurred in broad daylight at one of the city's most heavily trafficked intersections. At approximately four-thirty-eight p.m., a motorist exited his vehicle with a baseball bat, went after at least, uh, one individual, maybe multiple, um, that were engaged in squeegee activity. Uh, this individual swung the bat, and was subsequently shot and killed. Hours before the tragic incident, BPD responded to this exact same intersection for a report of a squeegee, uh, an individual engaged in squeegee activity with a firearm. Uh, that individual was arrested at approximately one-fifty-one p.m. On the firearm, a pellet gun was recovered. As I said during the public safety hearing, uh, last week, the level of violence in this city is simply unsustainable. Uh, two lives were destroyed last week, um, one person lost their life, uh, and is dead. Uh, and we have failed to adequately address this situation. As a government, we have failed everyone here by allowing these circumstances to continue to occur. I again, call on BPD leadership to ensure enforcement of the laws already on the books that prohibit this illegal activity immediately. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Are there any additional regular announcements? I see the hand of Councilman Burnett, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. Uh, if you give me a, a minute or two, I have a story to tell. Uh, so, I feel as though I have a duty to challenge the narrative that continually perpetuates the adultification, violence, and mass incarceration of brown and black children in Baltimore City. Because let's be clear, if these corners were filled with white kids, who's squeegeeing? Their narrative would be different. Our response would be different. I preface what I'm about to say with, I'm not trying to minimize anyone's negative encounters, or the tragedy that happened last week. The circumstances that led to that are all deeply saddening. But I also want to highlight that a lot of the incidents that occur are isolated. For years, my daily commute through west and southwest Baltimore takes me through corners on Hilton Street, where I used, I used to regularly encounter youth and young adults who were squeegeeing car windshields for money. Personally, I never had anything but positive encounters with these young people. And while I know others have had the opposite, as we've seen that firsthand over the last few days, I want to give context to those making incredibly harmful and damaging blanket statements about squeegee workers in Baltimore City. What I've been hearing in the media, on social media, from citizens, businesses, business owners, and elected officials alike, is that we need to use law enforcement to solve this problem. But is that what we need? The same tired response that leaves young adults less employable when they are arrested on the corner than they were before the officer showed up? I want to remind everyone of the circumstances which bring a lot of these young people to these corners, most of which, if not always, are out of necessity to survive through challenging circumstances in their family. This was true for the family that my office assisted in finding emergency housing after learning of an eight-year-old child and their siblings working on a corner near Martin Luther King Boulevard. The child's mother was fleeing brutal domestic violence, and staying in a nearby hotel that she couldn't afford on her own salary. She needed her children to squeegee to ensure they'd not have to return to the violence in their home. I lift this up as we continue conversations about what's not working, about how we got here, where we are severely lacking resources. Luckily, working through a network of city services and nonprofit partners, we were able to assist this family. But a lot of the families in Baltimore are not able to get the help they need. They do not have an alternative, and due to a lack of resources, or even knowing who to turn to for help in the first place. I say luckily, because this was an incredibly time-consuming and laborious task. It took us weeks to secure appropriate resources. My staff called the Mayor's Office of Homelessness every day for weeks, to see if there were resources available, coordinating efforts between government agencies and nonprofits. These systems are in no way easy to navigate, even for those of us who know where to look. The formerly squeegee corps, now the updated squeegee alternative plan, led by the esteemed Dr. Andre Bunley from the Office of African-American Male Engagement, focuses on going directly to corners daily, using credible mentors to engage the youth, providing consistent programming and quality-connected relationships to help guide these youths to alternatives. Additionally, Rick, who now works for the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Engagement, developed relationships with multiple youths on the Hilton corridor, and guided them over four years to the date, where we can now see the growth and impact of the program. The system used to successfully transition youth from squeegeeing to meaningful pathways was created by the Mayor's Office. And because of these programs, over time, I began to see fewer and fewer of those same young people on the corners of Hilton on my daily commute. Want to know what they're up to now? Let me tell you. Three have graduated from high school, which is a big deal considering where they started. One of them works at the Horseshoe Casino. One is still engaged with the program, and will be working at the Revival Hotel downtown. One works for DBW. One of them works for Wreckin Parks. One has worked at Burger King for the last three years. All proud, all gainfully employed. Others, we have heard from, are currently exploring different jobs and professional and technical training to find what career suit them. But the circumstances that these young people live through remain virtually unchanged. And so, other young people from these same communities, just like them, make the same choice to panhandle. Because of their pride, they choose to work rather than receiving what they consider a handout. They prefer squeegee workers, because they view it as a job, a humble one. And when presented with real opportunity to make better money, most will take it. Many of these young people live in communities where their peers are engaging in drug dealing and robberies to make a living. They're choosing not to, and view this as close to a legitimate opportunity to make money as they can get. We, as a city, have not created the opportunities for these youths to make other choices, to have alternative incomes to support their needs of their families. Programs like the one Rick used to work with, is, is chronically underfunded, is understaffed, and is often criticized by elected officials and business leaders alike for the lack of immediate results in transitioning youth off of corners and into formal work environments, as if solving systemic issues like this is just that easy. It's estimated that over twenty thousand people have disengaged from city schools, most of which have experienced homelessness, violence, trauma, and many of the failures that our society chooses to ignore in search of short-term solutions to hide the outcomes of our collective inaction. And these issues are not news to us. These are systemic issues that have gone unchecked for decades, especially given the fragile economic state that the majority of our citizens live in. We, as a legislative body, we, as community leaders... majority of our citizens live in. We, as a legislative body, we, as community leaders, must prioritize programs that support our youth and the actual well-being of our communities. We must be proactive and better fund programs like Youth Works so we aren't leaving students seeking summer jobs left behind, proactively funding community programs to prevent violence like the incident that took place last week, and frankly, continues to plague most of our neighborhoods. Almost done, Mr. President.
Good.
This body and the Mayor's Office need to better support programs that provide direct outreach to corners and help these young people transition. Residents need to step up too. Programs that are seeking mentors are often short of people willing to lend a hand. PTA meetings are often empty cafeterias, and the fabric of our community has long been torn. Community cannot wait for government to solve this problem without getting involved. We all are at fault. We all need to do more. It's my hope that we can turn this tragedy into a watershed moment that will make our city a better place for all of us. The lives of Baltimore citizens depend on real solutions. The lives of our children, future leaders, depend on this. This also means truly showing our love, our care, our compassion for children of the city, our children in the city. So let's come up with real solutions instead of continuously talking about what's not working. Let's get to work.
Are there any other regular announcements? Hearing and seeing none. At this time, I would like to recognize the, do we have the name of the gentleman? Forty-eight-year-old? Do we have his name? Can we make sure we get his name? Say his name. Madam Vice President, if you could please put the name Tim Reynolds in our moment of silence. Tim Reynolds. Ms. Dorsey, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to acknowledge the passing of my grandmother, 104-years-old, Jean Dorsey, a daughter of this city, a graduate of Goucher College when it was here in Baltimore City a century ago. And she was, she passed last week in her sleep, and she will be greatly missed by her family. What else can you say, right? Thanks.
Thank you. And for the record, Councilman Dorsey, please state your grandmother's name again.
Jean Dorsey.
Jean Dorsey. So we have Mr. Reynolds and Ms. Dorsey. Are there any other? Yes. Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do believe Ms. Boston as well has left us. Frank, what's her, what was her first name?
Beverly Boston.
Thank you for that. So we're going to add Beverly Boston as well. Any additional names? If that, at this time, I'll turn it over to Madam Vice President. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next meeting of the City Council will be held on Monday, July 25th, 2022, at 5:00 p.m. here in Council Chambers. And may we have a moment of silence for the family of Mrs. Beverly Boston, which is the mother of Frank D. Boston Jr. that we all know, and also his sister Carmen Boston. And also include Herbert Salmon, Robert Holmes, Tim Reynolds, Jean Dorsey, the continued families that suffer from our opioid and COVID pandemic, and now the 186 victims of homicide in this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Business before the desk. This will conclude the 36th meeting of the 73rd term of your Baltimore City Council. Baltimore, we absolutely love you.